You guys ready? I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Coolgals?
Here.
Vice Mayor Coolianis?
Here.
Mr. Eisner?
Here.
Mr. Giedenato?
Here.
Mr. Banther?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Chaplain Brenda Nieves of Advent Health North Pinellas. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads with me. Holy God, we begin our meeting tonight recognizing that all we have is wealth that is entrusted to us. The air we breathe, the health we enjoy, the land and water we steward, the families and friendships and communities we build, the peace we live in. The source of these blessings is larger than we are, and we pause with bowed heads to acknowledge our dependence and express our gratitude. Throughout our land today, citizens have exercised the right to express their hopes and aspirations for government through the ballot box. So at this time, we pray for the leaders who are and those who will be. May they faithfully execute their duties as we remain faithful to pray for them. And now, as this body takes up the duties of governance and administration tonight, we ask for your wisdom. Our goal is the flourishing of all life entrusted to our care, and so we lean on you for guidance. Give us ears that hear and hearts that listen, so that we may know the best way to conduct the business of this city. Finally, God, may we love justice, act with mercy, and walk humbly before you. This is our prayer. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to defy the United States of America. As we represent the republic for its essence, one nation under God, indivisible, perfecting justice.
Before we go into the proclamations, there are two items that will be deferred to a later date. The first item is a group of ordinances resolutions. That's Item 28, Application for Annexation Land Use and Zoning for Property Located at 249 and 251 Ankle Road, Application 24-51, and that will be deferred to November 9th, 2024, BOC Regular Session. And that's 28A Ordnance 2024-08 Annexation, 28B Ordnance 2024-10 Future Land Use Map Amendment, and Item 28C Ordnance 2024-09 Rezoning. Also, Item 29 will be deferred to a future date, which is Ordnance 2024-01 Land Development Code Amendment, amending Article 7 Heritage Preservation and Providing for Creation of Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Districts, Application 22-112 Legislative, and this will be deferred to a date certain of December 3rd, 2024. And now, we will be going to the proclamations. First will be the Veterans Day Proclamation. I'll be coming forward to present to three veterans we have here today. If we can please have Ms. Tiffany Ravine come up. She's US Navy veteran. She's owner of Leashes and Layovers Pet Care Services here in Tarpon Springs, as well as member of the Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce 2024, and she won the award for Small Business of the Year for 2024. She served in the US Navy as an engineer on the USS Bridge AOE-10, a combat supply ship, right after 9/11. Ms. Ravine's service was during Desert Storm and includes Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. We're gonna call up the other two and as you both come up, and then we'll read the proclamation, and if you'd like to say a few words, that would be great. Next, we have Mr. Jeremiah Mills, US Navy and Navy Reserves Veteran. Senior Chief Petty Officer Jake Mills completed 20 years of service in the US Navy and the Navy Reserves in March of this year. His many duties include shipboard firefighter, emergency room manager in Sicily, and medical coordinator for the DOD Wounded Warrior Games. He deployed overseas three times, most recently in 2020, as the top enlisted advisor in Afghanistan. Here you go, sir. And last but not least, we have this Haley Hoverter Johnson, US Navy FEMA veteran, former military police, served in the US Navy during the Gulf War stationed in Sasebo, Japan. Military officer, injured in the line of duty, owner of the baking soldier in Tarpon Springs, an exceptional business that reflects the courage and dedication of our armed forces and we are proud to have in our community. And I also want to thank every veteran out there, especially, you know, here in Tarpon Springs. I want to thank you all for your courageous efforts in serving our country and in all military branches and just having, you know, being fearless, representing our country. It's the ultimate sacrifice, and we can't thank you enough. We also have some veterans on our city staff. We have Police Chief Jeff Young, as well as Fire Chief Scott Young, and a few others. So I just want to thank you all so much and for doing the ultimate thing for our country. And so, here we go. The City of Tarpon Springs Proclamation. Whereas, "Our veterans represent the very best of America. They have bravely answered the call to serve in the finest military force in the world, and they have earned the dignity that comes with wearing its uniform and defending our great flag." And whereas, "On Veterans Day, we honor all Americans who have served in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard, both in times of war and peace." And whereas, "Veterans Day gives us time to pay deep respect to our veterans." And whereas, "We humbly thank our veterans and their families as we remember and honor their service." And whereas, "On Veterans Day, we remember these heroes for their valor, loyalty, dedication, and encourage all Americans to recognize the fortitude and sacrifice of our veterans through public ceremonies and personal thoughts and prayers." Now therefore, I, Panayotis Coolas, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2024 as Veterans Day. Please, let's give them all a round of applause. If you three would please just like to say a few brief words, we would appreciate it. Okay.
Okay. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and to the City of Tarpon Springs. I'm honored to call this place home and also where I do business. I absolutely love it here, and I'm so thankful to be here. Thank you so much.
I would also like to say thank you to the chamber and the city and the mayor for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you three so much. Next, we have the proclamation for National Native American Heritage Month, and we have to accept the award, Ms. Rita King Gunter. Thank you so much for coming in. We really appreciate it, and thank you. Ms. Rita King Gunter is a member of the Pueblo Nation that are 19 tribes located throughout New Mexico and Arizona, southwest US around four corners. My biological, her biological parents' tribes were the Hopi and the Zuni tribes. She was raised by foster parents who moved to New Port Ritchie in Florida in 1954. She graduated from Gulf High, was a Wikiwachee mermaid five years after high school, and recently retired from the US Postal Service. And presently works part-time as a member of the underwater safety team back at Wikiwachee Springs. She's a mermaid. That's awesome, huh? City of Tarpon Springs, Florida Proclamation. Whereas, "National Native American Heritage Month is celebrated each year in November. It is a time to celebrate the traditions, languages, and stories of Native American, Alaska Native, Native Hawaiian, and affiliated island communities, and ensure their rich histories and contributions continue to thrive with each passing generation." And whereas, "This November and every month, we celebrate the culture and heritage of these remarkable Americans who deeply enrich the quality and character of our nation." And whereas, "The City of Tarpon Springs promotes diversity, inclusivity, and respect for all individuals in our community." And whereas, "The City of Tarpon Springs joins others across the nation in celebrating and acknowledging National Native American Heritage Month." And whereas, "This observance offers increased opportunity to better understand Native American heritage, past and present contributions to our communities, and to honor the many indigenous people who have sacrificed their lives and customs for the growth of our nation." Now therefore, I, Panayotis Coolas, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2024 as National Native American Heritage Month. Here you go, Ms. Gunter. Can you say a couple of words?
I just want to say I'm very honored to receive this proclamation for, and in behalf of all Native North American Indians. And I want to thank Mayor Pete and the council and the City of Tarpon Springs for continually remembering and recognizing Indian nations. Thank you.
We're gonna go back to our seats and allow public comments for the proclamations. Are there any public comments on both proclamations? IT, are there any Zoom comments online?
If anyone online can make a public comment on this item, raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, IT Board. Are there any comments that you would like to give for the two proclamations?
Sure. Thank you. Yes, first off, for the veterans, Jeremiah or Jake, as I know him, is a good friend of mine, and he's a great example of a soldier, and also a very dedicated firefighter to our community, I think, I think over in Clearwater. So thank you for that. And then for the two ladies, it's very impressive that you chose Tarpon Springs to have your businesses. So I do thank you for that and for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. No Commissioner comments. We are going to move now to the special presentation, which is Item 3, Status Update on Hurricane Recovery. And presenting this will be Fire Chief Scott Young.
Good evening, Scott Young, Fire Chief. I just have a real brief update where we're at right now in the city as far as our storm recovery. So it's been 41 days since Hurricane Helane, 28 days since Milton landed. And what's a lot been going on in the city as we go through the recovery mode, and it still continues. We're not done yet. Regarding wastewater treatment, we have, all of our lift stations are back online except for one. That's at the River Village Mobile Home Park. It was destroyed by the storm, so they have a bypass pump there while we wait for the new pumps and equipment to get there to be fully back up online. But it is working on the bypass. We're glad to hear that. All city facilities are up and running at this time. Our city staff and crews have worked tirelessly to make sure everything can get back open. Sunset Beach was a huge undertaking for Public Works Department and Duke to get back up online, but it's on, back up open, and is open at this time. Our debris pickup is moving along pretty well, actually. We are about 80% of the city is picked up right now, or about 90,000 cubic yards. And we're still anticipating that we will be out of the job of picking it up from the streets around Thanksgiving. That won't end the project. The project doesn't end until it's out of the landfill, and they're hoping to have all that done and removed from the landfill by Christmas. So that's our goal. Again, the yard waste facility is open to everyone still with no fees. As we move through this process, we'll have to see what happens once it's all picked up, whether or not we're gonna have to move in just for the trucks to move in and out with the other debris. We'll let you know what's gonna happen with that. Might be a little chaotic at that point for the public coming in, and we'll let you know. Permit fees for doing repairs for those homes in the affected areas of the storm are still free. So please utilize that service to get your permits. We can get these homes back, back up and livable. I found out today that 60% of the businesses on the docks are now open, so that's moving along. I was told a little bit ago that Halas plans on hopefully opening in about two weeks. So it is coming back to life down there, so hopefully residents can come in and start giving their business back to those people that were shut down for so long to help them out. Over the next couple of weeks, you're gonna see inspectors coming around checking homes for the substantial damage. You'll know them. We'll put information out for that, when they are gonna be starting. They'll be wearing vests, I believe, and stuff like that. They'll be going around just to check to see what kind of damage the homes had and where we're at with that. That process is a part of what we have to do or required to do for FEMA, to make sure we are aware of what we have in the city. The Citywide Cleanup Day that was scheduled earlier was canceled because we didn't want to get it mixed up with the regular debris out there. That has been rescheduled, and that came out today for January 12th, the citywide cleanup. Hopefully, we'll be out of the way for all that, and we can get back to some normalcy after the holidays. Again, I want to make sure everybody knows that the individual assistance and small business loan time period is still open. If you need to do that, please get there. I believe that time expires the end of this month and the 1st of December. So if you need assistance, those are your cutoff dates. If you need more information, give us a call, and we'll try to help you all with that. Lastly, I just want to give a thanks to the residents. This has been a trying time for all of you, lots of stress. But, and I appreciate the help that we've heard from the community helping each other out. That has been tremendous. That's what it takes to get through this, is helping each other out, making sure that we're in it together as a team. I don't think times are trying right now, but we will come back, and we're gonna come back stronger than we were before. I believe that. So I thank you all for that. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Are there any public comments on this presentation? Zoom, are there any, or IT, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Coolianis?
First, Chief, I want to give you a special thanks for all you've been doing and keeping us informed and helping guide us through this whole ordeal. On a personal note, you know, I definitely appreciate you, so, more than you know. So, let me ask you. The overall cost that we had originally estimated for the pickup of the debris was $4 million. What do you know it is now?
That'd be a finance question. Do we have a number for that? About 5 million, they're telling me.
5 million?
Yes. We originally estimated about 150 cubic yards. I think that number may be down, so we might not have that number. We'll still make it into the 100,000 area, so the cost will be a little less maybe.
And we're gonna get 50%?
It's gonna go up, but it's good.
And we're gonna get 50% upfront, and then the city has to front the 50 till we get reimbursed later down the road?
Yes, so there's an expedited procedure that we, the finance, filed today through our consulting company to FEMA. To get 50% of that money back, they said soon. So hopefully with, they'd say two weeks, we'll see. So we should get about 50% of that back right away to help with the costs of moving.
And the other 50 were?
The other 50 will have to go through the whole process of FEMA paperwork, and that can take some time.
That's it. Thank you.
I just wanted to say too, the emergency declarations are still in effect. You guys will be ratifying those tonight. Those will probably be going on at least until the debris contractor is out of town.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. So the payback that we get would be only for what the FEMA trucks picked up and put at the dump, not for what the homeowners brought to the dump, correct?
I believe it's 50% of what the homeowners, I mean, the debris trucks picked up. Is that correct, Tom? Yeah. Let me get Tom. He might be able to answer that question better.
Tom Funchen, Public Works Director. No, the material that the residents are bringing into the yard waste is then measured and put into the pile, so we will be reimbursed for all that material they brought in.
So that's gonna be added to what the FEMA trucks have been bringing in?
Yes, sir.
I was curious on that. Okay. I have one more question, and this also you may not, you may have to refer. I did get a number of requests. I know that we're avoiding and comping the permits for people that have storm damage. What about people that wish to raise their home or wish to put an addition on top of their home? Will that be something that can be, it's not 100% related to the storm, but it is to prevent anything from, you know, the future?
I don't know that we have looked into that process yet as far as fees or permits for that. That's an ongoing thing that we're working through right now, so I don't really know where that's gonna go yet. So it's a little early in the process for us.
I just wanted you to know that was, I had a couple of requests.
We've had, we've had multiple people calling us about doing such things, and we're waiting for answers ourselves before we tell them which way we can go yet, based on the guidelines.
Okay, because you know, whenever these things happen, you always have the PTSD of, I don't want it to happen again. I can't live through this again. So people will do things that, you know, maybe they, you know, I tell people, this was a rarity. It could happen tomorrow, who knows? But you know, for the most part, it's not gonna happen again like that, so we'll see.
I think all of us, I think all of us, when we saw the storm in the Caribbean coming into the Gulf, had that little PSTV moment.
Yes.
Hopefully, it's going the other way.
But also, I wanted to thank you because, yes, you've kept me informed as well as you did everybody else, and I think you guys did an amazing job. As I see my smiley face over there. You did excellent job.
Megan behind me is our EM Coordinator and Flop Plane Administrator. She deserves a lot of this credit. She has kept this rolling. There's not a moment of every day since this storm, she hasn't been in two or three meetings trying to keep abreast of what's happening, and we're headed down this path. I mean, a lot of this is new to all of us, but she has been a champion through this whole thing.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes, 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 yes. Thank you, Chief, very much. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you. I just want to make sure, Charles, that we're putting on Facebook and everything appropriate about like the last sweep. So residents know to get everything out by a certain deadline. So if it's two, if it's three weeks from now, let's just call it two weeks. Leave a buffer, but definitely want to make sure we can't be criticized for not saying, hey, this is the last sweep. And then for that, thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up. The trucks are still making swipes or sweeps through the city. I know it came up about a couple residents that the debris was too far up in their yard. When these trucks go, they have the long arms that they can grab. They can only grab so much so far away. So if you have that, you need to bring that out farther to the curb, whatever's left. So these trucks, when they come around through their next sweep or whatever, they can get that stuff picked up. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to say you, staff, Mr. Funchen, everybody has answered the call. The debris pickup's going great, it's efficient, it's, the numbers are being posted, the deadline that you talk about is, as we're coming close to approach that deadline, that are those, those goals, that would be great for that Thanksgiving market, then the months they'll be there at the yard waste facility after. I just can't thank you guys enough. And so, and staff is also during this whole process with, you know, substantial damage, you know, looking at houses and stuff. Staff is doing everything they can to look at ways that are gonna help residents with the most possible, with any way possible for mitigation, for lifting. And at some point, we as a commission are gonna have to look forward to see, maybe give direction for staff. But they're doing everything they can to look at all options for those who are affected the most by it all. And so much has happened in progress and good progress for this community, and we're being transparent on everything we're picking up and how we're going about it. And I just can't thank you all and the whole staff and the city manager for everything you guys all have done. So thank you. So thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go to public comments. Uh, are there any public comments on items that will not be discussed this evening?
Good evening, Anita Protus, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. At our last meeting, Commissioner Coolianis gave an excellent report. Number wise, as how this storm is gonna hit our community. And I'd like to ask him again to do it, our city manager and our mayor, to give the residents a report, how financially this storm hit our community. People are talking about it, they wanna know more about it, those that didn't hear it. And I thank him for bringing those numbers forward because we are gonna be a little bit poor for a while. I'd like to know how it's gonna hit our uh home taxes, property taxes, how it's gonna hit everything that we pay for the uh uh the community because they've had it on TV for the beaches south of us. And they have really, really financially gone under a lot. It's amazing, as small as their little beach communities are, what they're losing. So we appreciate you bringing that forward to us. And we're gonna ask you to do it again and let us know how hard it's hit our community financially. Cause people think we have all this money and we don't. And money's not gonna be coming into us because of what's happened in Pine Ellis County. So when the time comes uh to our city manager, both of you and the mayor, get together and give us a report because I think that's very important for the citizens to harp and to know. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Linda Eisner, fifteen fifteen Riverside Drive. I would like to ask what the rules are for BOC spouses to serve on City of Tarpon Springs boards. Previously, it was demanded that I resign from the code enforcement board, which I did. I'm a graduate of the Citizens Academy. There are several empty slots open where I would like to help our community get back on its feet and move forward. So I would like to ask what the rules are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eisner. Uh, just give us a a day or so and we'll have one of the city attorneys, if not the city clerk, reach out to you with it all. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please. Uh, IT, are there any Zoom comments online?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, we are now going to the consent agenda items. Item four is satisfaction, release of lanes. Item five is attorney fees, Johnson Jackson P L L C invoices one three six four two and one three six four three. Item six A is special events, Saint Nicholas Vesper procession. Item six B, Saint Nicholas Epiphany Litany procession. Item six C, Snow Place Lake Tarpon Springs, two thousand twenty-four. Item six D, thirty-three, Thirty-third Annual Thanksgiving Arts and Crafts Festival. Item six E, Annual Christmas Parade. Item seven, ratify RFP number two three zero zero one two dash P dash J L Disaster Debris Removal Amendments one and two. Item eight, approve authorization of file number two five zero zero four three dash C dash P H for interlocal agreement between Pine Ellis County and local governments for the cooperative emergency procurement of disaster debris collection and removal and disaster debris monitoring and management services. Item nine, award file number two five zero zero three five dash C dash P H Emergency Response Restoration Services, utilizing utilizing the school district of Hernando County contract number two four dash nine one eight dash three seven. Item ten, approve fire department interlocal agreement with Pine Ellis County for the collection and remittance of construction plan review fees for all projects in unincorporated Tarpon Springs. Item eleven, award file number two five zero zero three zero dash C dash A S Liquid Carbon Dioxide, utilizing City of Oviedo contract number I T B two four dash two one. Item twelve, increase file number two three zero zero five eight dash C dash A S Sodium Bisulfide Forty Percent Aquous Solution, utilizing Lee County contract number B two two zero two five six C M R. Item thirteen, increase file number two four zero zero seven one dash N dash A S Public Safety Health Screenings. Item fourteen, award file number two five zero zero two one dash C dash A S Well Maintenance Evaluation and Testing Services, utilizing City of Clearwater contract number nine zero one eight four zero I T B one five dash two three. Item fifteen, increase file number two four zero one two two dash N dash A S Single Source Purchase of Q's CCTV Truck Upgrades and Repairs. Item sixteen, renew file number two three zero one one zero dash C dash A S Body Armor and Ballistics Vest, utilizing the state of Florida Alternate Contract Source number four six one five one five zero zero N A S P O dash two one dash A C S. Item seventeen, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Subrecipient Management Cost Grant Request for Project ID four seven four seven three four dash zero one three, City of Tarpon Springs Sponge Docks Flooding Abatement. Item eighteen, renew file number two three zero zero three seven dash C dash J L, utilizing School Board of Pine Ellis County contract two three dash zero six zero dash zero six zero Motor Vehicle Parts. Comment. Item nineteen, improve M O U for Hurricane Helene in Milton for entering into an interlocal agreement with Pine Ellis County for the use of section one two zero six Building Code and Flood Plane Management Administration and Enforcement. Commissioners, are there any agenda items that you would like to pull? Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes, I'd like to pull nineteen.
Commissioners, any other items you would like to pull?
Seventeen.
Any other items, commissioners? Okay, uh can we go to public comments on all consent agenda items four through sixteen and eighteen? There any public comments on those consent agenda items? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online has any comments for these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, the chair will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items four through sixteen and eighteen.
So move.
Second. If there are no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coolianis?
Yes.
Mayor Coolianis?
Yes. Next, we have item seventeen, which is Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Subrecipient Management Cost Grant Request for Project ID four seven three four dash zero one three, City of Tarpon Springs Sponge Docks Flooding Abatement. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to question exactly what we're utilizing this for.
These are just costs that come as like an extra, they're administrative costs. They help pay for anything that we would use the H M G P money for, such as like any time that I would spend administering that grant. We could submit that for reimbursement for my time spent managing that grant. That includes if we would happen to like use a consultant for something for that grant, we can get reimbursed for those administrative costs. It's not part of our ask with the grant itself. It's like a bonus pot of money that you're allowed to submit for. It doesn't cost the city anything, there's no match for it. It's just something that we can ask for on top of it. But we do require, they require a signature from the mayor to even ask for that. That's why I brought it before the commission.
So let me just say it this way. Um, so this is not the mitigation of our king tides and our issues with the king tide floods. This is, has to do with all mitigation as far as with the storms that hit.
Correct, this is from Hurricane Adalia, this is for H M G P for Hurricane Adalia. Um, we are currently under um the engineer review for that application. Um, we're in the final process of getting um funds for that through, we ranked high enough through Pine Ellis County that Pine Ellis County submitted it to the state, to FEMA for last year's hurricane. Um, and like I said, we were ranked high enough that they actually submitted our project for the sponge docks to the state. We're under final review. As final um review, we're looking at those management costs now as an added.
So one last thing, so this would be utilized for um damages that could have come about through the cities, on the city's property as well? To have somebody looking over and seeing the damage that we had?
That would only for Adalia, it would only be for managing this grant for Hurricane Adalia for the sponge docks. That is it.
Okay.
Yeah, not for anything current. If that's the case, that would be for future grant applications for those ones in particular.
I just wanted you to be specific.
No, that's okay, cuz that gets very confusing cuz we have so many different storms and pots of money that are gonna be coming available.
I like pots of money.
We all do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, are there any public comments on item seventeen? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online has com, public comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item seventeen.
So move.
Second.
There are no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coolianis?
Yes.
Mayor Coolianis?
Yes. Item nineteen, approve M O U for Hurricane Helene in Milton for entering into an interlocal agreement with Pine Ellis County for use of section one two zero six Building Code and Flood Plane Management Administration and Enforcement. Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes, uh, I I brought this forward because there were, there was some citizens that have contacted me, just for clarification. Uh, some concern that maybe we're giving up some of authority, but the way I read that, it's not the case. But I'd like Chief Scott to to please, you know, further explain that and and.
Sure. Scott Young, Fire Chief, so what we brought forward, it's called a twelve oh six. It's authorized through FEMA to provide communities assistance after events such as these storms. Uh, most cities don't have the resources to do everything that we need to do. Do the inspections, all the FEMA paperwork, et cetera. It's just, it gets mind boggling and it's a lot to do. What this does, it's a free service through the county, through the state and FEMA. Most of all the cities are signing the same agreement. It authorizes us to use this company, these companies, to help us with these uh paperwork and stuff I just mentioned. We don't anticipate having to use it. We believe we're gonna be okay, but we're using it as a safety net in case we need help. Cause we have a hundred and eighty days to get certain things done. If we are getting up against the timeline of that a hundred and eighty days, we'll enact and bring them in to assist us. But we don't at this point believe we're gonna need to use it. We just brought it forward, it's free service, but without, without it being signed, we can't utilize it. So that's why it's here. We're not giving up anything, we're just looking for help if we need it.
That that was the part I just wanted to clarify, that we aren't really giving up any, any security that for the city.
No.
Actually, it's gonna, it's gonna help us, as I understand it.
It brings people in to assist us and the things that we are required to do after the storm, that's all this is for.
Thank you.
Thank you, are there any public comments on item nineteen?
If anyone online? If anyone online has any public comments on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Consent agenda item nineteen.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Coolianis?
Yes.
Mayor Coolianis?
Yes. All right, we are now going to the business items of the day, which formerly known as the special consent agenda. Um, item twenty, we have discussion in direction of city compensation and rate study. Um, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is uh something I think was sort of queued up and discussed at the end of last fiscal year. Um, and it's a uh go outside for professional rate compensation and benefit study uh to compare us to cities of similar size and population and budget and so forth. We've done a lot of in-house studies in recent years, but this will be one to take a broader view. They look across the state for similar communities and give us an idea of how we are paying uh for cities of our size.
Thank you, city manager, that sounds like a um a great idea. Are there any additional comments or uh anything else that Ron Finance Director or Janina Lewis may may wanna add? Not, okay, we're now going to public comments on item twenty. There any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments online?
Anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve item twenty, discussion in direction of city compensation and rate study.
So move.
We have a so moved a second. Are there any public comments or any commissioner comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coolianis?
Yes.
Mayor Coolianis?
Yes. Uh, item twenty-one is approve employee hurricane assistance and we have a city manager, Charles Rudd.
Thank you, Mayor, this is item we were asked to bring back to you for consideration. Um, in a previous storm, the commission had voted to uh approve a stipend for the for the staff. And this came up and we provided in your packet what the stipend was previously, what it would be with inflation and uh just asking for your direction.
Okay, thank you, are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments online?
Anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, uh, well, there seems to be a few different options, so I'd like to have a discussion first and Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my only thing is, um, I just never heard of giving a bonus with a stipend for inflation. That's the only thing. I don't have an issue with the amount. Um, and truthfully, I would rather it be written off as um back in twenty seventeen, they dealt with one hurricane and this one, they've dealt with two hurricanes. So I I'm okay with the price. I just don't know, when you give somebody a bonus, do you do it according to cost of living? It's on an increase, it's it's a, uh, so those words, the only words that I find a little bit difficult to digest. But as far as uh the amount, I I'm okay with uh doing the uh two fifty five hundred. Um, they worked very hard, they were in two storms and there was not even a break in between. So I would go with the higher amount.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you, yes, I would support the, I I would support the higher amount. Um, I know that uh when I spoke with the city manager today, I'm not sure if this is brought it, brought this up, but it was asked about, you know, maybe they said, well, in lieu of that, to give the Monday off be be uh 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 before Christmas. And I I wouldn't support that by itself because our first responders don't get days off. But I certainly would, would be in favor of both. Um, the staff worked two, two significant hurricanes. And as we've heard from the fire chief, uh, this work is gonna be ongoing. I think we just settled the Irma debris, debris pickup collection. And that was a spit in the bucket, that was just trees, that wasn't floodwater. So I'm definitely in support of of the higher amount. And if possible, I think we should give employees that can take off that Monday as well. I'm not sure if that's on the agenda. I'm not sure if that's on the, you know, like docket tonight, but that was mentioned to me by the city manager and I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Coliannas?
You know, I hate to be the Scrooge in the bunch, but I'm telling you folks, we've got financial. We've got to tighten our belt. We've got financial issues coming up. I mean, this is the total of this is over two hundred thousand dollars. They deserve it. But I think that if we can find a revenue neutral approach that gets them a decent benefit and thanks them above and beyond the fact that they all received their overtime. And it says here that the overtime expenditures incurred were eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So we've already paid them eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in overtime pay. And now we're adding two hundred thousand to that. I think that we could use, you know, there are some cities down south that went to cash to allow employees to cash out PTO. So to get a benefit upfront. I think that if we use the I'm fine with multiple extra days of off for them. An extra day off for Christmas, an extra day off for possibly New Year. They could, you know, we still need to keep the city open, so we can't have everybody gone. So we could also add a an extra day per epiphany. That again is revenue neutral because we're already, whether they're we're paying them to be here or paying them not to be here, we're still going to be incurring that cost. So I would like to have an approach that was revenue neutral. Because at some point, we've got to tighten the belt and do something now. You know, I don't want to be put on the spot to say no to the employees because I know that now that this cat's out of the bag, they you know, be extremely disappointed if they didn't get something. But I would I would prefer a revenue neutral approach. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner DiDonato?
I've looked at it too and questioned and have talked with the city manager about it as well. I too am concerned about our upcoming issues with our budget and and that cost that that have been added that no one could have guessed. I mean, while we planned for some of it, we didn't plan for two that close together. I too would prefer something neutral as far as further costs. I want to commend all city employees. I just I don't know yet how the amendment that Darpen has, whether that passed or not, that's five million, five point two mil two five million. There's just a lot to take on right now, and I prefer the revenue neutral approach.
We're going to go back to I would like to give them something or I mean, I understand that we have the the neutral approach as well. I'd like to lean towards at least the the minimum of the four hundred for each employee. I know it's seems like we're going to have two two at the moment, so let's see how discussion goes here in the future here. But it seems like one way, whether we do a neutral approach or give them some type of stipend, we are going to look out for city staff. So we're going to go back to Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor.
Did I have Ron? Ron, could you come up here, please? Thank you, Ron.
Good evening, Commissioner. How you doing?
Always excellent. Thank you. This total eight hundred and nineteen thousand and fifty four dollars. Are we responsible for all that or is FEMA pay us back on any of it?
That will be a hundred percent FEMA reimbursed.
So what was earlier said was not true, that it's money out of our pocket. We're going to be reimbursed for that?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it's within the first ninety days, we get a hundred percent reimbursement on that. That's category B.
That's all I needed to hear from you. Thank you.
Mr. Banther?
Yes, thank you. And I've been meaning to ask this for several meetings, well, the two I've been here. And Ron, you know, I was a big fan of the reserves ten years ago and preserving that. What's our current reserve balance?
Our current reserve, as we ended up last year, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, is about eight point seven million.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't want to be doom and gloom, but I think, you know, with this, we're it's going to go down for two thousand twenty-four September thirty two thousand. It's going to go down. I was planning on going up three hundred thousand, but with the five hundred thousand coming out for overtime and stuff out of the general fund, it's probably going to go down to about eight point five million.
We have this reserve fund for this very reason of hurricanes. So thank you very much.
Sheriff, Vice Mayor?
So even on the the five million that we have to come up with for the debris pickup?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to ask for expedited on the fifty percent. Where are we getting where are we getting the other fifty percent from?
Well, the plan is we've got about one point four million in the sanitation fund. We're going to use that money. The other thought was was going to come tonight, but maybe the next meeting on the nineteenth to do an to try to carry us over a little backup plan was to do an interfund loan from the hospital fund. We have three million sitting there. That's not going to be touched for about twenty years that we would borrow from that. Until we got the reimbursements back from FEMA for that balance that's not part of the expedited. Or the general fund if we wanted to do that, but that's going to reduce the reserves more in the general fund.
Let me ask you, this is we have employees. I don't know if you've done this. I think we talked about it, looking at employees who made over a certain amount of money, right? Because if and I know I don't want, I'm trying to save whatever we can save. But we have employees who make sixty dollars an hour, right?
Correct.
Okay. And they worked overtime during that time and they made ninety dollars an hour, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you know, the five, I think, you know, these stipends are most useful to those people who are the lower end employees that could that really need the money. So we could look for at least have Ron do a calculation on employees at a certain level. We could we could do a hybrid of all this. We could offer a day off, which would be helpful to even a higher end employee because they can always they always love days off. Everybody would. Then we could have a cutoff on on certain level of employees and give the lower end guys five hundred rather than four hundred because they could use it. So maybe there's some kind of a compromise here. And even the eight hundred thousand in overtime, it's going to take some time to get that reimbursed, right?
Yeah, FEMA's yeah, not that quick. We fact, we just finally it takes about a year.
Okay.
At least a year to get the money back.
When, you know, the the I'm not true stuff that came from the other commissioner. This money, this eight hundred thousand will be a year before we get it. Because we are still getting money from a storm one year ago.
Correct.
Okay, so this eight hundred is coming out of this budget and most likely won't be reimbursed in during this fiscal year.
Correct. It might not be reimbursed by the time I'm trying to close out the next fiscal year.
There you go. Okay.
You know, I did do a you did talk to me about a level of calculation just for I don't know if we want to hear it, but
Yeah.
I you asked me about something when we talked. For people sixty five thousand and less, say we gave, I can't remember if it was a four hundred, two hundred, it came to about ninety thousand bucks.
So it saves seventy five thousand dollars to take care of the people below that certain level that had, right? Versus the hundred and it's a hundred and sixty four is is paying everybody four hundred dollars. It's a hundred and sixty five thousand, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if we did a cutoff, we would save seventy thousand seventy five thousand dollars.
Correct.
And we could still offer them a day off and pay the lower end people that extra money.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
So we have the reserves, I've heard. We have other ways of borrowing the money. The fact is that we need to reimburse the people very soon after they've done their life risk and helped out the city. You can't be wanting to do this down the road. I would be okay with giving them the choice if they want to take it in a day off. But I don't care if you're making thirty thousand, sixty thousand or ninety thousand. Four hundred dollars isn't changing your life. It's a gesture. Well, five hundred dollars is a gesture to say thank you for doing what you did. And I also want to ask the police chief. You do have a number of policemen that came in from Pasco County and didn't take care of their homes and they came here to to take care of ours. Is that correct?
As did most city employees that came in. Yes.
Correct. So I'm using that as an example, but you have to reward that. Or the next time we need somebody, they're going to sit there and say, what am I going to do? Trade this off as a day? That's that's not that's not a reward. All I got to say.
Commissioner Banther, your light was on?
Yes, real quick. Yes, thank you. I do want to say, obviously, no one up here knows numbers better than like the vice mayor, at least from a professional standpoint. I have a lot of respect for him. And he's bringing up some very good points, not just about this item, but in the broad spectrum of the storm that, you know, it's not it's not just FEMA comes in and just takes care of us. We just got reimbursed from Irma and that was what eight years ago, maybe something like that? Seven years ago?
Well, Irma Irma was two thousand seventeen and it took two years to get that debris money back.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's that's a lot better than than what I thought. I just think, you know, yes, the 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 vice, the the vice mayor brings up some very good points that we should not be up here just spending store money like it like it's a free credit card. It's not. However, I do think on this item, I don't I I personally would not factor into somebody's overtime pay. Like they made money. They made money by working, by working during two hurricanes, by not being with with their with their families. You know, the majority of our staff, especially those that are not first responders, don't make anywhere near near like, you know, sixty dollars an hour. Personally, I don't care if you make a hundred dollars an hour. I think we should give the same to everybody, but I'm willing to concede on that. But I just don't think it's a good look for this commission if we don't, if we, you know, shoot this down tonight. Obviously, we can make adjustments. We can give the lower amount, whatever we have to do, but you know, our city staff busted their backsides for for basically two once in a century storms. And I don't think it's a big ask to give them what what was it, you know, a couple hundred dollars. Again, I'm open to discussion about that, but I just wanted us to be mindful of of just the perception of that. With that being said, I do want to give Commissioner DiDonato and and the Vice Mayor's point that we cannot be spending store money like like it like it's free. It's not. And we should be very careful and mindful of which funds we pull from and knowing that they might tell us we're going to get reimbursed in six months, that that might be a year or two years. So I just want to give the other side quote unquote some credit, but I do think that this is important for our city employees. They don't make that much money at the end of the day, especially ones that aren't, you know, certified. So I really think this is important for them. And I know during Irma or after Irma, it was it was very well received and it was a morale booster. So I do hope that the board considers that. Thank you.
Thank you. For no further comments or discussions. The chair will entertain a motion to approve employee hurricane assistance so that the total cost with benefits to provide the her the employee hurricane assistance will be in the amounts of four hundred dollars for full time and then two hundred dollars for part time employees.
So moved.
The motion dies. The chair will entertain another motion?
Motion to approve two fifty and five hundred.
Second.
So that's two fifty for the part time employees and five hundred for the full time employees.
Correct.
After Vice Mayor Coliannas?
Mayor, where where do you stand on this?
I want to give them something in the form of a compensation. I mean, I went to those guys and I said, man, I'm going to fight for you. When, you know, Commissioner Banther brought it up and every time I see those guys, all those street, all those employees, I said, listen, we, you know, we got a stipend coming up. I'm going to fight for you to try to get the minimum. There's, you know, the minimum's about four hundred. We saw some different variables. I can't promise you that, guys, because we do got some big uncertainties with the debris and with everything going on. But I looked a lot of them in their eyes and I said, I'm going to try to get you that minimum that Mr. Herring brought up, that four hundred. And so I just want to stick to it. And if if we see we have two other commissioners that were willing to go to that, I mean, we're going to go for it. I this is our one time to make something for these employees and I like to show them that we care. We know, you know, we know we're always looking out for them. But these were two one hundred year phenomenons and so I would like to support compensation for them. Sure. City attorney?
Yes, I'm sorry about this. Sorry to throw another angle on this. I don't handle your labor and employment issues, but I do know enough about this that I wanted to bring it to your attention. And it may be something that might cause you to want to bring this back up in two weeks, but there is a state statute that prohibits the compensation after to public employees or bonuses after the work has been done. And there is a state statute on that. I reached out to Attorney Salzman, but I think he's probably in a meeting. I didn't know if he had weighed in on this at any point at in time. But if you'll recall, a couple of months ago in St. Pete, I think it was Mayor Welsh, they wanted to give bonuses to their employees for all the hard work on the ball field area. And they had to retract that money because it violated the bonus the bonus statute in Florida statute. That's two one five point four two five, extra compensation claims prohibited. So I'm not trying to rain on a parade, but maybe it would be in the best interest to look in this into this a little deeper in the next two weeks, just to make sure we're square with that. I mean, again, you know, I know Attorney Salzman's in deals with the labor issues and you also have a labor attorney. But I would hate for you to be in a position where you you give money and then legally you have to take it back.
Okay, so I mean, you're in that Commissioner DiDonato?
Along that line, I definitely want to do something for the employees for sure. I there's been a few things thrown out tonight and and not all of that's really been looked into totally in the backup. Why don't why don't we take and table this to the next meeting? And what I'd like to see from our city manager, from Ron and department heads, whatever, maybe we could do a some kind of survey and throw some options out such as what's already in front of us tonight versus a combination of, you know, the monetary bonus, if that's indeed legal and and then revenue neutral or and the third would be the revenue neutral. And and maybe see how the employees themselves feel. I know it's hard to do that in two weeks, but I think every department head could probably talk to most their employees and come back with some kind of consensus. I'd like to propose something like that so that we do this the right way. That's I mean, I want to do my part for the employees. I'm very grateful to them. But I would like to just explore all our avenues and then make a decision.
May I make a suggestion before we go to both Commissioners Eisner and Banther? I would say that we bring this back in two weeks with the verbiage written that if we are not allowed to get them the stipend based off work previously done, then not only do we have that one day for the holiday, but possibly two. And I think that's, you know, a way to go around it and give the employees that that time off needed. And so it's not as much as I think the stipend would be, but if if we're bound to certain rules, then I think that's really our only option. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. One, has any other city done this? And two, did we break any rules in twenty seventeen when we gave this out?
Mayor, one thing I could suggest, and it's not really an answer to that question, but I know that of one city that set up a program where employees in under this emergency situation were permitted to under this emergency situation were permitted to um catch out their PTO time to a certain limit. Uh, and also allow uh employees to donate PTO time to affected employees. Um, I know I've been involved in that program before. Um, I just wanted to offer that as another option to look into in the next two weeks. With regard to that.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. I'm obviously fine revising this 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 in two weeks because I think right now this doesn't look very good for us. And I want us to be on one page and hopefully a page that does something for our for our employees. Honestly, a little surprised we're having this conversation up here. I I I'm not an attorney. I don't pretend to know any kind of labor law, but we did this in twenty seventeen with 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 no problem. I will be floored if we can't legally give our employees assistance for though for two major hurricanes. Again, I'm not an attorney. Maybe something changed since 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 twenty seventeen. But we get sued for for like looking the wrong way. And we did this in twenty seventeen with with like with like no issue. So I would like clarity by that, by a labor law attorney, not just a attorney. And I hope that when this comes back in two weeks, we can be on the same page and this looks a lot better for staff. Thank you.
Sure. And maybe there's a bonus or a holiday pay coming up, or a holiday bonus. So there, I think there could be some possible ways. But it looks like we need to defer this item to a future date. So the chair will entertain a motion to defer um the to defer the approval of employee hurricane assistance in two weeks at the next B O C regular session meeting.
I'm in second.
There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Yes, we are now going to our ordinances and resolutions. That is, public hearings begin at seven thirty P M. First item is item twenty five, resolution two zero two four dash four seven, ratification of executive orders two zero two four dash zero eight, two zero two four dash ten, and two zero two four dash twelve, extending a declaration of state of emergency for Tarpon Springs due to Hurricane Helene. A city attorney?
Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying executive order uh twenty twenty four dash zero eight, extending declaration of local state of emergency to October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, ratifying executive order twenty twenty four ten, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to November fifth, twenty twenty four, and ratifying executive order twenty twenty four dash twelve, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to November twelve uh twenty twenty four, and providing for an effective date to hear of.
Thank you, city attorney. Are there any public comments on this item? I T, are there any Zoom comments online?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve item twenty five, resolution two zero two four dash four seven.
Go move. Second.
There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther? Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Yes. We are now going to item twenty six, which is resolution two zero two four dash four eight, ratification of executive orders two zero two four dash zero nine, two zero two four dash one one, and two zero two four dash one three, extending a declaration of state of emergency for Tarpon Springs due to Hurricane Milton. City attorney?
Resolution of the Board of County Comis- uh Board, sorry, Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying uh executive order um twenty twenty four dash zero nine, extending declaration of local state of emergency to October twenty nine, twenty twenty four, ratifying executive order twenty twenty four dash eleven, extending declaration of local state of emergency to November five, twenty twenty four, declaration uh ratifying executive order twenty twenty four dash thirteen, extending declaration of local state of emergency to November twelve, twenty twenty four, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you, city attorney. Are there any public comments on this item? I T, are there any Zoom comments online?
Anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve item twenty six, resolution two zero two four dash four eight.
Go move.
There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. We are now on to item twenty seven, which is resolution two zero two four dash four nine, ratifying administrative actions of the city manager authorized in association with state of emergency declarations for Hurricane Helene and Milton. And we have uh Planning Director Renea Vincent.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, this is just a resolution that ratifies administrative actions taken and associated with the emergency declarations for certain um permitting, you know, requirements, uh waiving certain fees. Um, we have direction from the board uh Heritage Preservation Board to um allow some uh things that normally would go to them to be approved by staff. So this packages everything up and kind of after the fact brings it to the board for your ratification. And these are tied to maintaining the declar- the states of emergency or the declarations of emergency. When those expire, this will expire with them.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. A city attorney, can you please read the title?
Absolutely. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying administrative actions of the city manager authorized in association with the state of emergency declarations for hurricanes Helene and Milton, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? I T, are there any Zoom comments online?
Anyone has a public comment on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve item twenty seven, resolution two zero two four dash four nine.
Go move. Sorry.
There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. And we are now going back to business items, the item twenty two, Appointment to Planning and Zoning Board. And uh, Ms. Ms. Menusas, can you take it from here?
Sure. So there is currently vacant uh vacancy on the planning and zoning board due to the uh then chairman Merle Seaman, who has been termed out, served his ten years on the board. Um, there is a current alternate, Susan Swenson. And also, we do have an alternate, uh, an applicant um also that is willing to serve on the planning and zoning board. So the board can move the current alternate uh as a regular member. That term would expire October one, twenty twenty seven, and appoint the applicant, uh Lori Weaver. Uh, and that, well, she would be filling the unexpired term. That would um expire October one, twenty twenty five. Then she can be reappointed at that time. Or your other option is just to appoint the applicant, Ms. Weaver, as a regular member. And if you do that option, it would leave the current alternate, Ms. Swenson, in the alternative position.
Thank you, Ms. Menusas. Um, are there any public comments on this item? I T, are there any Zoom comments online?
Anyone online would like to make a make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, uh, the I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Banther?
Oh, no, you can talk first if you want to. It's fine.
I was just, I was gonna say the chair will entertain a motion, but I understand.
Motion right now if you want me to. I'm ready. I just wanted to ask, personal seriousness, um, I am always sensitive and supportive of 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 always moving alternates up. I assume that Ms. Swenson has been in attendance and and actively involved. I don't I don't know her personally, so I can't. Is uh Renee here?
She's in the green.
In the green? I would assume you have been involved, yes. Okay, um, then I would I would definitely motion to move up the alternate member, um, um, uh, uh, Susan Swenson and uh to the to the regular uh spot and then move up or, you know, appoint the applicant to the alternate position, and that would be Ms. Weaver.
All right, we have uh Commissioner Banther made the the motion. We have a second from uh Commissioner DiDonato. There are no further comments. I just want to say these two ladies are great. I'm happy to see them on the planning and zoning board. Uh, Ms. Swenson's been very active in the community. Uh, being Volka as a business owner as well as as and especially Ms. Weaver being involved, which she has some great experience too. So I'm happy to see them both on the planning and zoning board. There uh there are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. We are now going to item twenty three, which is case number two zero two four dash C I dash zero zero two zero zero two, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, versus Tina Hinton. Uh, city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this this is the only uh case, litigation case my firm's handling for the city. Um, the, and it is active litigation, but it just started. So normally, uh, we wouldn't talk about uh litigation like this in uh this open forum. However, uh, it's so early in the litigation. I received a call from Ms. Hinton, who is here. Uh, yeah, there she is. Um, and it's the underlying issue has to do with a code enforcement matter. Uh, and she contacted me and indicated that she's prepared to have a contractor uh demolish the structure that's on the property at uh seven oh seven Chesapeake, I believe, Chesapeake Drive, which uh is my understanding would cure the violations. Uh, and I saw this as an opportunity, if she could do that, to uh not have the city incur my legal expenses on litigation. Uh, and uh perhaps solve a problem for Ms. Hinton and the neighborhood and the city. Believe this has been going on for a while. The commission did authorize uh this litigation. Uh, so it's proper for us to come from us to come back and ask you for permission to stay the case short for a short period of time so that Ms. Hinton would not have to hire a lawyer, would not have to answer the complaint she was served with and uh actually take care of the problem. And if that happens, then uh we can have the problem resolved and then go on to the next stage of dealing with the the fines and so forth. So hopefully that's a enough of an explanation. It's a, it's me trying to do some problem solving here.
Thank you, city attorney. Uh, now, if one of public comments on this item?
Sure.
Are there any public comments on this item? I T, are there any Zoom comments online?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please, and then you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Uh, city attorney, at this point, would would the requested like to say a few words or is it more of?
It's really, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, she's she's obviously allowed to speak here. Again, it is litigation, so it's a little awkward. I'd ask everybody to be a little bit um aware of that. However, um, you know, this is a really just a straightforward agreement, and she could maybe put on the record that she's she's confirming this agreement, essentially that she's got a contractor, that contractor's gonna go pull a demo permit and hopefully get this done by the end of November. And then uh, the only the only other thing I would suggest is maybe as she goes along that she gives us uh proof of the contract with the contractor. And then when the contractor gets the demo permit, that we get proof of that. So we see that this is actually happening. Um, I think this should just, so I I don't know if Ms. Hinton would like to say anything. It's up to you. Uh, um, you know.
I would like to thank everyone for allowing me to um speak and to take the time to handle this. So, and Mr. Dickman, thank you. Um, and my goal is to resolve this as quickly as possible.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, I just, because I'm still getting up to speed. I assume that by her doing this, this will halt the fines once it's complete.
So the fines are running. Um, and we've got, we've got our our code enforcement expert over there. Uh, once the, once the problem is cured, uh, then the fines stop running. And then she'll have to deal with, you know, deal with the fines. I'd ta- I I like to take one step at a time here, you know, cure the problem, then deal with the the fines later. But yes, it will stop the.
And the, I'm it though. And so the demo cures it, correct?
There, yes, but I'd have to go through. The code enforcement officer would have to go out there and inspect the property and then bring it before the code board did bring it into compliance.
And we're giving her two months to get this done? I definitely want it time sensitive.
Yes, um, no more than two months. Um, uh, I know that Ms. Hinton has indicated to me that she had difficulty getting a demolition permit in the past. I'm not sure why, if that was a different issue, different time. But I would personally help in any way to shepherd this through the process, um, because I know that uh, you know, again, this is be being a problem solver, not wanting to run up litigation, uh, if it's not necessary. But two months uh should be plenty of time. She did indicate to me that uh she has a contractor that is willing to um enable to do this in November, but let's at least give it into December in case there's some hiccups.
I'm in support. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Was there anything said up here that you disagree with?
Specifically, when?
I just, you know, uh, Attorney Dickman?
No, I I appreciate um the work and effort to try to help me get this resolved, because that's my goal, is to get this resolved.
Okay, so the timeframe is good for you and all that? And the agreement is good and all that? Okay.
Yeah, my agreement with the contractor actually is to demo it. I think it's November fifteenth. A little bit of li- a little bit of wiggle room through the twenty second, I think it is. But if I could get it done sooner, I sure would. It was another property affected by the by the flooding.
Okay. No, no further questions.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hinton, I would just ask that, you know, it's the let the city attorney know of your contract you have, save all of your receipts. Work with the code enforcement officer to come in compliance, verify all that. And, you know, I'm only one person up here, but I'm gonna fight for you to make sure we get that reduced down to probably nothing if you're gonna spend tens of thousands demoing it all. Understand you're gonna help comply with the neighborhood. Um, that it is an expensive piece, so I'm only one person, but I'm gonna do my best to make sure we knock it down as much as possible. That way it helps the neighborhood as well. And we help you out too, ma'am. So uh, that's, that's what I wanted to say. If there's any other comments, uh, city attorney, the motion will be to approve the case number, but with the recommendation to pursue to pursue the foreclosure proceedings?
So the request of motion is to authorize the city attorney to stay the foreclosure action. So I will have to file something to uh to to give Ms. Hinton the ability to not have to buy, get a lawyer and respond and and spend her time on something. So the motion is to stay the foreclosure action uh for no more than two months and allow the defendant time uh for her contractor to obtain a city demo permit, uh coordinate with the city and demolish the structure at seven oh seven Chesapeake Drive.
Go move. Second.
No further comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
And we are now going to uh the last item for the night, which is item twenty four, Discussion in Direction on Excessive Water Bills Storm Related. Uh, Commissioner Eisner, can you please present?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So let me give you some background into what happened. I normally don't pay my water bill. Um, that's something my wife does, but uh But, uh, I just happened to have a glance at it this past month. And, uh, I noticed that we average about thirty-three hundred gallons a month. And this month I was at eleven thousand eight hundred or nine hundred. So I was very, uh, concerned about that, that I might not be the only person that has that. So I had a discussion with Irene and I believe Michelle was on that conversation as well. I also spoke with Shane. And we tried to come up with an idea on how we can try to see about helping, um, the residents. Uh, because what has happened is anybody who's been flooded, um, just under the FEMA has to have your house pressure washed outside and inside. Um, anybody who has a swimming pool, when the salt gets in it, has to drain it at a, a number of times. It's not something that you could just drain in one shot, because I've seen, I've heard of almost two pools that have popped out of the ground because they drained it down to nothing. And then they went into thousands of dollars of, of repair. So, um, depending on the size of the, uh, pool that you have, you may have to dump two thousand or three thousand gallons at a time. Fill it, dilute it, put in two, three thousand gallons, and it just keeps going until you can dilute it down to where it's at a, at a good level. So what we had decided to do, and I'm just looking for somewhat of a approval from the board. Um, as I spoke with Shane, he wants to do this on a, um, a piece by piece basis. So if somebody could come in and show that they were, um, damaged from the storm, that, um, they would consider, um, at least minimum not having to return water, uh, be billed, but also to try to help out with some of the costs. This was not something that I wanted for myself. I'm speaking more so for the residents. Um, but I know that, um, a lot of the residents in town have been, um, hit really hard financially. And I just didn't want this to be another burden upon them. So I was just looking to bounce it off of the board and see if this was something. Um, I, I, I wouldn't be making the decision, you know, the, the billing department would accordingly. But people would have to bring in some sort of evidence that they were affected and, and, and what they were affected with. So that's pretty much it.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Are there any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Banther?
I also believe e- even on a non-storm day, and I could be wrong, Michelle, if you're correct. But if you do fill your pool up and you call the city, you don't at least get charged for the drain. Though, though, uh, is that still correct?
Yes, there is an adjustment.
Well, you know, so even if we can't, I mean, I assume we can do something, but if we can't, then at least people should call in for that. If you had to refill your pool or some significant, I don't know, weather body of water you have in your home, but that you need to call in because you don't get charged for the, for, you know, draining that water out. But yeah, I would be in favor to see what the city manager could come back with as far as what's possible. I know when it comes to water, it's a little bit of legality there, but hope that anything, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, any other commissioner comments? Vice Mayor, saving money here?
No, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't tell, um, the water department how to do their job. But, uh, one way they could is they could look back at the water usage from the same month last year and then establish that as a baseline. And if there's additional costs above that, then they could look at it and try to give relief on that. So. I think there's a way to do it.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. DiDonato?
I feel much the same way. I, 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 it's not a bad idea to, to look at. I, I know, for example, we have a policy with pools. If you have to repair a pool, you empty it and then you got a larger water bill the next month, but you can at least get your sewer, uh, reduced. So we should look in, in, into it and see. But I would go to, to wait and see what staff recommends.
Sure, yeah. And we had brought this up as a group together a few meetings ago, where, you know, we have residents excessive washing of clothes or, or other materials have been saturated by saltwater and other situations. So, um, I think we, we somewhat collectively said, if, you know, we can show that it's above what their previous average was for the last year or some, or even these last few months to maybe would credit them that difference. So I would be in favor of that, but I, I would also ask that it does be a case by case situation. We can't have staff go look into every single account. And so I would ask that the residents who do have that situation in which it is above average to have to reach out to the city to request it, and maybe we can do a PR campaign to let the residents know about it. So, um, is that a, is that enough direction there to bring this item?
Yes, we'll bring something back to you. Yes.
Perfect. And so that is item twenty-five for the evening, or item twenty-four for the evening. And. We're now at too early. Yep, so.
Last time that happened.
Uh, this concludes the regular session agenda. We will now go to board and staff comments. Staff comments, Police Chief Jeff Young?
Uh, just want to remind our residents that, uh, Monday, November eleventh, at eleven AM at Craig Park will be our Veterans Day ceremony. Please come out and join and just kind of piggyback on the mayor's proclamation, uh, from earlier and celebrate those that have served us. Thank you.
City attorney, Mr. Dickman?
Nothing to report, sir.
You, uh, city clerk, Ms. Menusos?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, city manager, Mr. Red?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, as I, as I'm beginning to kind of listen, or as I've been listening and formulating, uh, ideas, um, I, I do want to ask you all for a date for a CRA meeting, uh, distinct from this meeting, because I want to go over the, the adopted redevelopment plan and, and talk about how we move forward and what I'm calling revitalizing the revitalization. Uh, so I, rather than add it to this agenda, which would, uh, I think from this meeting, my recommendation would be to have a separate CRA meeting. Uh, perhaps next Tuesday, if Tuesday nights work for you all, or we can, uh, go through that plan and I can get some direction from you.
Okay, I, I would be open to, uh, any day you all suggest we, the twelfth, I, I would be available. It's just the rest of the commission on what things they would like to decide. So. So will you just follow up with us in an email and pick a date? Or would you like to tonight?
I know how you usually do it. Do you just?
We do both.
Dates or?
Sometimes we do both, so.
Then we can let you know what the.
Just email, yes.
Yeah, everybody can let me know your availability.
Perfect. Email work. Uh, anything else, city manager?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to board comments. Commissioner Banther?
No comments.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner DiDonato?
No comments.
Commissioner Eisner?
Always a comment. Um, so I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a seafood festival coming up this weekend. Um, the Sponge Docks needs all the help they can get. Um, there was a Fox News that, uh, did a, a, a little bit of a stint on it. Um, sixty percent of the businesses are open. We really need to be there, um, and trying to support them. Um, so I just hope that, uh, we can get as many people as we could out there. And once again, I do want to thank, um, the, the police, the fire and all the staff, all the hard work that you did. Um, whether we get you full money or not, it's still, thank you for what you did. It was, it was, uh, for, for a storm of this magnitude, I feel blessed in a way for the minimal amount of what, what we could have had, you know what I mean? So I do want to thank you for that as well. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Uh, Vice Mayor Polianis?
Yeah, let me, uh, uh, on the employee thing, the, uh, uh, again, I, I am totally, uh, supportive of our employees. Again, I'm trying to look for, um, some kind of revenue neutral approach, uh, given that we do have, uh, whatever financial things we have coming around the bend. Um, the Ankleb property, uh, amendment passed. So, um, you know, the, uh, there's good and bad, and the bad is we're gonna have about, about, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, of debt service that we'll have to cover each year. And again, hitting us at a potentially, uh, vulnerable year. Uh, the good part is it's valuable property that I think will, um, that the city can use and, and do some really good things with. So, and then long term is probably a, a good thing, definitely a good thing to own. Um, you know, I, I, uh, the city manager, um, this goes along with what Mayor Protas was asking. Maybe I'll give her a little bit of, of that, uh, presentation right now, but I'll make it really short. Um, the city manager, uh, at my request, uh, organized a, uh, conference with a municipality down south that had been hit by, uh, Hurricane Ian. So we had, um, a, a, a look back. I wanted to see, I wanted to talk to, uh, somebody there who could tell us how the effects of the hurricane. And I'm, again, with cash flow, and that's something I, you know, talk to, uh, the, uh, finance director, Mr. Herring, on a regular basis, is, you know, again, getting us through this cash flow, because if we gotta come up with, uh, two and a half million plus all these additional costs we're gonna have, and that five could creep up by the time we're done, um, you know, you had actually mentioned at one time even going as high as seven. So if we hit seven million on the, on the, uh, cleanup, then if we get expedited three and a half, we might have to wait a long time for that other three and a half. Again, that's gonna dip into our reserves. I know that's why we have it. But, uh, we, then we have to try to replenish the reserves, uh, because at it, at the eight million dollar level, we're very, very close to our, you know, state, uh, requirement. But we do have a few years to get it back up. But, uh, again, that's gonna be, uh, uh, you know, a financial, um, uh, lift for the city. But anyways, I talked, we talked to the finance director and the city, uh, manager of, um, Fort Myers Beach. And just to give you something that, and we'll go, I'll go more into detail and I'll, uh, definitely fulfill your, your, I'll fulfill your request to, uh, do a little bit better presentation. But anyways, they, you know, we went, again, like I did, uh, last, the last meeting, going through the three criteria, the three sources of our revenue, sales tax, admin arm tax, services. Um, they were hit harder in the second, um, in the second year. So the first year, you know, we're getting our real estate taxes from the prior billings. So we're, won't see much of that. We'll see, uh, definitely see an effect in water usage and we'll definitely see an effect in sales tax. Um, so they were hit that way. Um, one of the, 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 they were in the third year and going forward now, they've actually had somewhat of a renaissance. And that's a good and bad thing. Because what happens is, um, let's say, for example, we, and we haven't talked about it. I assume we're gonna talk about it at one of the su, our subsequent meetings about the fifty percent rule, right? So if we have a piece of property that, let's say, was assessed at two hundred thousand and they have a, um, they have more than fifty percent damage. So it's a hundred, let's say a hundred and twenty thousand to repair the, the property. For them to go ahead and be able to rebuild that house, they have to meet code. And if they have to meet code, they gotta go up. And then they're gonna be building a much more expensive home than the house that they originally had. Now, if that happens, we may have people who can't afford that. Uh, they're, they may be in a pickle where, um, you know, they don't qualify for a mortgage to be able to do that. Um, uh, it's, it's, and what hap, what can, what's happened in their community down in Fort Myers Beach is they've had a demographic change. They're getting wealthier people moving into those neighborhoods, building the more expensive homes and displacing people who were, you know, especially at the elderly who can't afford to go and spend more money. So we have to be careful. So that's something that, again, I, I, I'm not, you know, I, I, I'm not trying to scare everybody. I just want to be sober and know that we have these, these challenges. We're gonna get through them. We're a strong community. We're gonna find, and, and there are a lot of places to go for money. There are, uh, you know, uh, different programs and, and we may be completely whole. But, uh, it's like, um, if you, uh, if the husband in the family has a, uh, gets a bonus every year and he gets told or he's seeing that sales aren't as good as they were last year and that, and he tells, hey, honey, you know, the, we may not be getting that same bonus we got last year. Don't be, you know, buying all new furniture for the house. Okay? It's just what you do, you know? Maybe you don't go to Starbucks and buy your coffee five times a week. You, you make some at home and put it in the thermos. So if, if that's what we gotta do, that's what we gotta do. Um, but anyways, those are the things that keep me up at night. So, thanks. And, and by the way, you know, you didn't get any credit, you know, our, uh, the mayor, uh, we had that, uh, triathlon race out there for the Rotary Club. And then we had this five K race and he made the podium. So, you know, he, he, he doesn't look like he's fast, but he's fast. Now, he might be the second fastest guy on the board, but you know, that's, that's, uh, something we can talk about later. But anyways, I want to thank him and any, and he's, he's running great meetings. Excuse me, we're getting out of here quick, so I'll shut up and.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, and I played basketball about two weeks ago and my body is still sore, so I just need to stick to the running. Uh, I, I just want to thank staff again during this whole cleanup that we have going on. Uh, they're doing everything they can to, to open up the city as fast as, as fast as possible. We're getting a lot of media news coverage now recently. Uh, you know, and sometimes it takes a couple of local business owners to, to get some spotlight to the community. And there, and there's nothing wrong with that. And so, um, we're getting some exposure to the community. Um, I did a, a report with, uh, Baydoo's Nine, uh, this morning. So maybe tonight or sometime in the next few days, they're gonna, they're gonna air it, but we got the seafood festival opening up. Um, we're, we're on the mend. And, uh, this commission, we worked really great tonight. I don't know if it's everybody just wants to get home and watch the results, but, uh, it's, just want to thank you all. We're, 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 we're working well. We're gelling together and appreciate everything that's being done together as a board. So this now concludes the regular session meeting, uh, meeting adjourned at eight fifteen P M.